Yeah.
I'm here for one thing. All right.
Yeah. If you guys want to. I can. Somebody to. Yeah. I mean. They might. Um.
So. Yeah. I'm gonna make it. Yeah, well. Hi.
Yeah. Yeah. That will carry me. They surround us with. I like. One, they're.
You.
Do it. Do on this.
All right, good evening, everyone. It's time for six forty four. We definitely want to thank you all who are joining us this evening for our redevelopment race meeting for the training between the planning. Of course, this is an official meeting and training. We put it out there whether or not. We try to pay attention with this. We have people. Both of them in the house and have happened. Have a lot of strange. COVID hit and went virtual with everything and just trying to get back on track. Had a. One in a progressive by the way. Person who wants to find a commission. Created a compromise. And they started switching this business and moving quite fast. And they're very persistent and still. But I think the point that he we want fast is him right now. As you see, you look around Rome, it's really almost the same. Really, it doesn't differ from any that are here. Because we're the, I guess. You don't lose. Now all the. I was. Tired of getting far away. Going to City Hall. When I'm going to get. The ground was right in front of me. But at this time, I was going ahead and turned over to the.
Thanks, Chair. Appreciate you. Thanks for having me. I'm representing the thing from here today along with. And we just want to also give a big shout out to our vice chair. Based on meeting. The result is ready to go right here. Number two, so. Daniel and Mr. Williams. Thank you for bringing us all together in the same room and couldn't do it without. For our mayor. Thank you. And you, Dominic, for hosting. I guess we're hosting you. Yeah, so I just want to let you guys know that what we're saying for us does. Work here Monday, Wednesday, Friday, the whole day. Yeah, ask different questions about what we do. Other property. Probably you've got high buildings, probably you've designed a building. What is the owner of their property? Again, those basic questions and the day to day basis. So we also help applicants through the new construction of a project. And also the parasite plan to get to. This is one of the, one of the many things that we do in the cleaning department. We also have two key goal or two key documents that the cleaning department oversees. And that is our zoning ordinance and the master plan. And we'll get into that a little bit more with the presentations, our redevelopment ready. But I wanted, I wanted to speak on a little bit about another two main documents. And then also another little document that you might be familiar with is the back door. It's the annual cleaning program that the cleaning department produces. So the first half of the annual cleaning program that we do, I think, is up in January. And here. And they talk about all the properties engaged in for that year. You can see we've been busy. And then in the other half of the document, we offer recommendations for bigger projects that we recommend. So we can see that we recommend forward updates to our master plan. That's the first thing that we have okay. And then we also have some zoning ordinance and that we add. And we also completely put what the prices are. So I know we're going to talk a little bit more about what the, the projects are, what the document means, what community development become a well friendly city. But the master plan overview, actually, you can see it only as two tiers. There's actually three options here today. Not as far as what to keep though, it's one of them. Three different options and three different price points. One is we can just reaffirm and review the master plan. That is a nominal low cost. And I'm sorry, I'm coming here hot with cost, right? I'm sorry about that, but you know, as you know, when we move forward, profit plan price tag. So I didn't want to be transparent in. The control of the zone and finding during the room what the cost is. So option, first option is to just reaffirm the plan as a low cost. And then the second option is if you think your master plan is a little outdated and the community knows that master plan is supposed to be updated every five years. Our master plan is created seven seventeen. Now, two thousand twenty two, it needs to be updated. That's Michigan state law requirement. So we need something. The option is what we want to do. So the second option is to review and plan. This is like a little bit moderate cost. I kind of a. Update what the master says. Do you want to add any components that say, like, do you want to add any questions on our computer settlement housing needs there? Do you want to like update what our vision for the downtown area or any zoning needs? So that's, that's the latter one. And the third option is practical update of the master. Cleaning firm as it stands right now, recognizing the second option, having a reaffirmation plan, but also updating the section that are relevant to the safety based on how top of seventy today. And then as well as the zoning ordinance component, we also recommend updating zoning ordinance, but without the practical price tags. So cleaning department right now, we're looking at what we can do within our office hours to see how can keep things, keep the maintenance going to help us. Zoning ordinance within our time that we have now. Especially the, the, the. Part of the zoning ordinance is called pain. We don't call pain points. And so we do need, we do need a little bit of a diagnostic for the zoning board. And that's what I just wanted to call for attempt to say, I know you have to pack that in front of you, but we can keep asking that I know Dominic will talk a little bit more about the search for master plan. It's on. Yeah. Okay. Okay, you know. It's in the air, all right? And I would also love, and I have others who introduce Melanie Hines, the director of the context for the cleaning sector. He calls the. Director of the school board of Wesleyan School. So, Melanie.
Okay. I'm excited to be here for this amazing thing going on in the city. I can see the city, I can see the city and the things coming out of the flames. I mean, we have a lot of people coming. We had some events a couple of weeks ago, actually, I went downtown and did some business with. And we have people coming to that. So we've been amazing. We got offered, we got. A lot of our business, a lot of easters, we work on that right now. But it's amazing. I mean. Patrick's doing amazing stuff. Uh, we have some. Summer stuff, we have some. Um, fun stuff here. So I'm excited to try to all here. We make, we are, we see our families and we're going to rock and roll and we have to do prioritization and the moral and the peace and the. Senator and all of our board of commissioners.
All right.
Yeah, and first of all, among all that. And you know that early time, forty, thirty, or forty. The development community has worked back down. So. Then she said, second thing I would say is that, that I have twenty months' worth of this. My holiday. So in the meantime, I don't know how long it's been. It's been. You know, and. When. Dominic, remind me. The community development manager was maybe. Essentially, what I do. I work primarily with developers and property owners. I need that to convert corridors where there's a need to gap finding. Basically, if you have property, you wanted to redevelop in the downtown. Area. And you were going to improve that property, maybe it's a place functionally adequate. Um. Um. Some, some sort of. Issue with the property. And you've already talked to a bidding or. Union Development, finance institution. You've got cash. You, you look at process events. What that property is going to price for. And you still haven't got, there's a missing amount of money. But after you finish that destruction, probably not going to appraise for the amount that it costs. So. Um, we haven't sent this, especially communities that are growing. Have a plan and zone properly. Do the things they want to do to help them. Cash. And so we love to work with the community. I'll make sure that they're doing what they're doing. That that developer, property owner is talking to clear communication and accountability and other good stuff with them in, in a very direct and thoughtful, critical way. Um, and we can help to, you know, fill their gap. So that's what I do. I evaluate those types of projects. Um, but I also call my colleagues and kind of spreading the word of things that we do. We also. Programming. And so. Um, I'm here to speak about a redevelopment community program. Um, I'm filling in for Elizabeth Kane, who's actually the senior. Um, R R C community planner. She can. At least. Um. In this presentation tonight, I'll be providing high level overview of. How much can you get on the corporation? We're involved with community and best practices. Uh, interest status, we have our program. And the work that needs to be done and. There. Um, there'll be. Um, and the process for seeking and achieving. Um, we're going to start with kind of a very high level overview. Of economic development overall, I mean, these are already state overall, you know, developed share. Um. So a few years ago, we started to do our own community planning in-house. We decided that, um, we do a lot of survey for our customers. A lot of times we have a meeting. I mean, to validate interactive and how good we're. Contact, she might receive email a couple of years later. I. I'm a bounty bill. It was terrible. Now, um, that's all the truth, right? Uh, and so we do that. So we're very far in terms of that. Some of the things we're providing are great. But now we know this, that we aren't really redevelopment ready to be ourselves. We weren't really adding ourselves. We decided to do that. And so we came up with a vision statement and some achievable areas. And so in this way, we could, we, it's when we're long term, upward economic ability for all. Um, so as you can see on that slide, there's six focus areas. Really, um, you know, what is even on the call? Really not. One answer, right? But most definitely focused on conduct, like quality of life, what happens to the job and how you spend it. Um, so how does Michigan interest us to be on development as a state? Uh, we have a partnership with forty one locally developed organizations to collaborate with the state level. Politically help create a spirit in the state. Uh, our, our work and with other agencies is divided into ten. Um. We work with numerous local and big and federal partners to engage. Um. Those who want to make their place start. And numerous amounts of different tools that we use. Uh, our strategic focus area includes attracting, retaining and growing businesses, developing and practices supporting smaller. Our C program falls under the development and practice. Um, and so. Overall. Uh, even out the ball in Michigan is driven by a simple. Place, you know, the policy in there. In very late months. Town, one place, town is more concerned about where they're living, the experiences they're having. This is New York for four, five, six, seven years now, uh, more and more. COVID really focused and made up by that. Uh, where people were going, like, they wanted to be working from all these technologies, kind of wonderful and. Or, so in this case, putting people in places they want to be and able to work from work. Wherever those United Nations are, they need business. So. You know, a lot of people going to one location, there's, there's need for support, so they can use better services. Um, and. Um, and people are looking for this particular New York. In business case too. So therefore. Um. You can outwork businesses, but as we also see, um, if people are losing or they're doing different side hustles, so they might not have the side hustle working into our capacity. Um. We need to get that plan and, and it wasn't good away. And so all those things. Um, help to create the R R C as private. Um. And so as you can see, the phosphorus competitive climate and creating and marketing all the labor, they're kind of, you know. A motivation or a combination of. So that's kind of what it looks like. We can. And a lot of the development organizations and organizations are, um, people and professionals work in this land. This very junior, Saudi Michigan's municipal governance. Um, Congress of the Economic Development Strategies, which is some, some part, I don't know if they're some guy, but. Um, they also now is the same thing and very similar focusing. Or on the organization is the R R C. And there was two organizations that worked. So developing, that's the, that's basically the focus area. Um, the key focus area that we follow. And we see the economic development. And this, this is huge. Houses of our state program primarily focused on vibrant, sustainable, profitable teams. There are several teams dedicated to help communities access information about our tool, including the state historic preservation office, Michigan, R R C and culture council, Michigan Main Street program. The redevelopment service team and economic and social groups. Uh, our R R C department also works closely with the austerity team, which I am on. Um. And the recent factor is involved with vulnerability, so we have funding to deal with. So I work on community development side, we have planning team, and I have associated on my team with them, but also working directly with companies and businesses. It often grow and find the resources that are suited, uh, directly toward their needs. Um. For a long time, it was always got creation of fifty jobs or more. And so you can imagine the type of business, that size, that we actually had fifty jobs. Well, that hasn't worked for the main three, walk down to the corner type of business. So now we've added a small business fair business, bunch of other things that were trying to do paper focus on my. Um, including ways to support. And growing with this, giving them three ways of earning a one year business and strategy that. You know, one or two or three. So.
Um, to your question. Yeah. I'm wondering what it takes conceding, sir. We have to, we have to combine needs and hope get on finance and brought. Can we call you for support or what?
Yeah, you can contact me directly. Um, so.
So do we qualify for assistance right now as we are in the development. Um, but then.
For any incentives that we have that we offer.
Yes.
So. Um. So for many years, we've hinged R R C engagement or certification as a trigger for investment of community development tools. Um, I will say in the future. That might not necessarily be the case.
Okay.
If. You're in good standing and moving forward, it demonstrates that those projects are in place. You're in good standing and moving forward in the demonstrating that those projects are in place. Better, but we're gonna still. Her board, the Michigan City Board of Government, that's not. That board is going to ask questions. And this particular board has a lot of questions. They are honest. I mean, they are honest, so um. They will wanna know, is it in a place? What kind of jobs are being created, those people in the nation? How are we demonstrating the best type of location? Later. Are they fully funded up investment?
In that.
Project from developer property owner and the the locals.
Yeah, I think it might be helpful content because I didn't hear you that. Describe this part of it, but. These are in the age community, but there are locals that hopefully will follow them up to. Uh there is a presentation and we're not at the level as much people have all of the resources that are available to things, I think that is what.
Yes. Because it yeah, it's not just uh incentives for redevelopment projects. For other uh tools and programs that come uh see. That actually. So from one level to the next level and going back, I would think. So we'll get into that a little bit. Um and voila, the redevelopment ready community toolkit, right? So essentially, like I said before, you got business developers, look at companies, businesses and help them grow. Uh target to be. And look at more industrial areas. At a lot, something called maybe the space or whatever, with kind of infrastructure, we can say, oh, there's. And that will be business develop. Community development, that's cool, we try to grow the mixed use. Um and and then the technical. So uh R C powers communities to shape their future, build the foundation of things, knowing economic development best practices and integrating. Uh they go voluntary technical assistance program, available to any community relevant. Uh communities build a strong foundation. Think of R C as a road map. Ultimately, R C contains. Position communities for development. Uh since your community is engaged, R C is for considering. It understands the following, this is self-help. Well, this team can provide dialogue guidance. Uh R C does not have the capacity directly nothing to explain going according and etc. Definitely to have them do and how for yeah outside. Okay, um however, the R C P does have a capacity in a smaller. Or your right, some people also keep finding that as training strategy. Not so the other. Team works with over three hundred and ten communities throughout state. What makes sense to one community does not necessarily handle to another. Our first key value and we raise that concept of the third key importance. Of older communications that R C can understand the local challenges. So that you can understand the intent of that practice. The option for designations also provides another layer of customization to the experience. I say this is one of the more most important pieces, and I this is out of the script here. For communities is R C helps you. To define what your community identity is sometimes. What is important to you? As how you want to see it grow is the importance of people that doesn't want to do it. Right, and that starts with you. So um that's a very important part of one of the most premises. You cannot address all challenges, communities are complex. Uh can help address challenges with planning zoning, can you go on, make it on the ground, and that those can help address others. Uh it's not a goal to fix everything. The team does value its precious local communities, helping in helping communities with additional resources. And other R C community. There are so many times, the other R C community, which are others. Where you go to a search that together, you start talking between sessions. It's important. It works because what's going on in one community and another community, they were giving you a name. It very much affect help you, you are learning. Alright, so as you can see the map. There's a lot of them, there are a lot of dots in the map, right? Um that's that's the three hundred and ten plus um on there. So the program offers to fast reach R C documentation. This provides flexibility and more manageable internal process. The R C essential is perfect for communities who may have a small staff. Intent of it is to assist communities in facilitating a predictable development experience. Meeting the R C essentials helps communities establish a strong and predictable foundation. While setting them up to pursue certification at the next step if they so choose. The R C is such as a cap is made up of streamlined and frontated set of best practices. Expectations making program easier to accomplish, must be true. With four best practices. Communities that reached the R C essential information. Have continued to support the R C resources such as the R R C library. And their R C planner, access to technicals to match funding. And ongoing access to and support for training. Once a community has reached essential status. They could choose to maintain their designation from. At this time, Astra is designated as an essential. So so no, 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 look at that as a family. Because it's a. It's a step in the right direction, you're still gonna be doing all of the things. Still be doing, if you're just getting to a certain point. It's almost like becoming a junior. Right, so.
Okay, alright, so we were under the saying of working our way to.
Yes.
Does that mean that we are.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Community, working our way to be essential.
Yes.
Or are we, you just said that we were, were.
Yeah, it designated as going for the sessions.
So does that mean I'm still qualified for the technicals in funding and everything you said in intentional?
Yeah, what I just read.
So then that is.
Go ahead.
No, I just wanna say what you said, because you said.
Yeah, that Astra is. On the essentials path. So we saw, I have the question that that everybody asked, so currently, we are part of the twenty four local community star and gay. You are in the program. You wrote for the specials, however, that could be flipped tomorrow to certification if you wanted to. I mean, seriously, you just have, you 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 can just be added to the new path, you're not listening. So if you're on the road for essentials, you're still working on the best. That are included in certification. Okay, so you see from grabbing a little bit of what's. The R C certified that builds upon the visible development experience in essentials. So you're taking your essentials. You reach essentials, you can build on that. You're doing all that stuff. All those best practices. Same, except for there are some, the essentials have. That if you just wanted to be essentials. You can just listen. There are newer benefits to essentials. But there are benefits to being. So the that is essentially for you. Really, it's for you to be comfortable. Then you can be a better champion of explaining like why this felt very important to your community. Um is it important or is it okay others to take the online, like pre-recorded sessions? Yes, and anybody who wants to, I encourage you to do so. Because it's important to learn. Yes, and in order to actually be engaged in the program, have have at least one gap. So, right. And so then you also have people on staff who are part of the communities. That helps. If it was just strictly the consultants, then I would say, no, you need a new guy, but that does certainly help a lot. Okay, um. The certified path is perfect for communities that not lose down to see essentials, but actively focus on implementing the best practices. Communities to reach our C certification also can continue to access the R C's resources. Visional technical assistance managing. So workers ready and we can get access to redevelopment services team. Who will help them select the most valuable. That's one of the key benefits of these serve. If the city owns non-go parcel. That's the bones, private or public property. We haven't seen no common, I mean, that is. Sale or redevelopment. Lot of work.
Okay, um I have now, can we see the graphic, sorry, so I feel the. The our team on.
TA, the technical assistance management for.
Okay, uh so. We declare that we are pursuing an essentials dedication. So do we right now, are we eligible for the essential public then?
So uh so yeah, so what what would Anna tell me? So you're ready for the samples. You would, with the community, would work with Elizabeth. To identify what would be a good technicalist project. To get you closer to the essential. That's what the TA matching fund would be. Okay, so I don't know, it used to be that. There could be matching funds up to thirty thousand dollars per. Elizabeth doing the D job on your view, she does the evaluation, she. Looks together all the stuff for you. She will be able to know what's the biggest thing required. Also, at the same time, talking to your community and community saying, well. We like to do this, but we think we should do this. We have enough dialogue, we have communication, we have decisions. She's not gonna undertake to you. Whether that's what they're going to be, if you feel very upon. Totally one or two things. That needs to be addressed typically. There's a bigger topic like, like, you know, maybe things like that. That that I'm higher place there, but like I said, there's typically. Yeah, it's a. Anything that gets the community was sort of finishing. And that's part of, so you didn't be all, it would be one particular, typically one. Or sometimes it can be, it can be. It's two things, maybe there are not, maybe they, maybe if we just. So there are smaller. It's not gonna take as much. To align the zoning ordinance to the master plan, so maybe that's the rest of my. And maybe not a development stretch. You know, with some. So. Now, but this is essentially saying that you're gonna get assistance in the essentials plan, and once you're certified, you'll get more assistance in the same car. Plus. The redevelopment services team coming to you. Okay, um so. While R C started in the Michigan area. The program became available statewide in two thousand thirteen and has evolved to be more flexible customer communities as well as sizes. Currently serves more than three hundred and ten communities, each working with his own local challenges and strengths. Median population of all of these communities. Three thousand three hundred and nine person. Median population of all certified communities, eleven thousand seven hundred and four. Engaged communities. Uh exist in eighty one out of eighty three. The number of, the number of ways I love this. Number of ways to reach certification. Sixty four communities across the state are now certified. And five have now obtained R C essential status, so. And the reason why they're so low is because we just did this reboot. Okay. So R C is guided by six principles. Uh community driven, uh communities' vision and goals are at the heart of it. Defining defining how it plans, what actions it prioritizes, how its zoning goals look to be one. No two communities are the same, and in recognition of that, R C provides countless options integrating with this. Predictable. It strives to help communities build predictable development experiences. Applicants can easily find and comprehend development standards and expectations. They will be more likely to invest in the community now and in the future. Uh implementable. Uh the principle applies to both of community focused planning. And in how R C seeks to integrate the best practices, practices of. Plans that sit on shelves collecting dust are little used and any ones focusing on specific actions. And implementation gets communities. Proactive, understands that they operate in a highly competitive world. Be proactive, helps secure. We all win when friends, families, neighbors and communities. Integrating R C best practices into local offices can make it easier for local. More prosperous communities. Collaborative, community and economic development are our team's sport. And R C captures momentum to collaborate with both traditional and non-traditional players. Ranging from local businesses and schools to non-profit foundations of community opportunities. So here's the graphic. As you can see on this page. All the dark blue at the bottom is what you would need to fill. So to meet. So there are just little numbers. Essentially, what those are. The sub criteria of the best practices you see above that with the orange brown circles, BP one, BP two. Okay. So essentials path. Gets you to a path where. You're building a foundation, you notice that those green boxes match up with blue box load. Essentially, what that means is. And they're the same best practice, those same best practices for essentials exist. And they're the same best practice, those same best practices for essentials exist within the certain way. So let's say at this point, your appetite, your community's appetite is just on an essentials. Which is what the path is you're on right now. Let's say after you gain that essentials designation. And goal. You wait a couple of years, you come in and say, well, we're going to certification. And all this stuff still counts. You're just working on the other piece, Dylan. There are some sub criteria about the essentials pathway. That are also tiered to essentials. As opposed to service, there might be like, let's say, I'm just going to pick one. Two point four. That you only need two thirds. Of the sub practice. You might need to give that last third. As a part of. That should be identifying the, your evaluation. On the Trello board, uh, I want to set up. I don't know if everybody will know the Trello is. You guys probably look, you've got a lot of information. Uh, so. And that should be telling you where you're at. Okay, so Trello, so. Trello is a one page, basically one page board. It has a sub. It kind of gives you. Like frontiers, so take one of the blue or the green boxes you see on the graphic. Four point one. Four point one talks about aggressive towards a commission, so. Do you have? Uh. A product at which you attract and train more of mission. It'll give you some details to what it'd be. What are the steps to complete that practice? Who's responsible and how much time? Do you, you be spending or deadline? To an. And so as you. Work on it, you take it from the need to work on. To the working, currently working on, and then. The proper C review. And then the comparison week, you can move the board, kind of like, like intro. The thing about it is that all the people. Can look at this Trello board. All at the same time, you could be talking on the phone or sending internal messages. Or you could bring it to a meeting amongst yourselves, say, you want to move these two and so forth. Uh, and do it very easy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we haven't brought it to. I, I, um, I, I really like Trello, I use it to organize how I like, but also the department can organize all of the projects. Uh, but it's a. Cloud-based organizational framework. So, that's the big component here, and we like that. Organize what's next and what part we have to do, where are we at in the pathway, where are we at in this project? Um, but I like how romantic setting dynamic. Move part or project and then also, um. Speak to people right within the board itself.
Yeah, and, and you can send, you can send it and say. To RRC, please review the. And they'll react right in that part of it, say, you reviewed it, you see this reword. Be very specific about the drives and systems. So. I'm going to get that in a little bit, um, I'm going to show you a big or the, uh. White, green, dark green, yellow, red. And it'll show you a little bit, so. Okay, let's move on, okay, so. Um, oh. We just kind of go through the best practices, plan for public engagement. Master planning, adopted every five years, um, or. Dodging those downtown reporter plans. Your, what we have to do, tickets, purchases, or improvements. How does that factor in? This best practice also comes with many goals. He's a public participation plan, help bring the community together along with competition. Along with that vision. Um, you know, these funded, funded, uh, foundation plans probably key first step realizing. Vision is important, looking into the future. When everything else is all in one. How you see your community today is more. As practice two zoning. Zoning is an integral to implement implementing the community's redevelopment vision. Takes, and, and to look into that throwing. To be aligning to their master plan, so. Say you want, excuse. Language and how does it need? Zoning that aligns. One is the vision, one is the team, right? This best practice, we look. And not only creating walkable districts, but also integrating housing diversity, market flexibility, green infrastructure, and user. Every zoning ordinance is different, but the best practice is that no matter the. Development review. Streamline development review process for the first developer. Is clear, I know, a lot of developer developer needs to do. To make your place a better. This best practice evaluates the community's development process, quality, and how. Purpose of the call, new processes, onesure plans for specific types of development. And our consistent management plan. All the levels as an external facing service that we in positive way. Uh, for, for missions. Uh, well, uh, prepared for its commissions, ensure smooth development. Uh, this practice, uh, evaluates what community does with movement and plantation. This practice also, well, there's your boards, dashboard, meeting procedures. Strategic approach to training. And enhanced communication between boards and reports and change. Uh, economic development and. Both active, economic development and marketing strategies allow you to control their narrative. This is why I started off for. Unity identity, unity law. How are you basing to your life? How you work? This assesses the goal, the action that the community has identified, strength in overall. How the beginning of most markets itself, we need to establish. Goal of this best practices is to. To is a great opportunity for these to leverage this in purpose. This best practice helps communities identify locals, tools, policies, well. Things are going in the right direction. You'd be able to provide maybe a beside here to some. Who are, there are a way of, oh, you can just complete the review process. On its content, important, another priority that immediately. You think it's worth following. If that's what you. But that's how you, you, you. You would have to know, you would have to, oh. Is it in the vision of the community, actually, well there. Uh, and. Um, yes, the zoning will have to mention, because a lot of the zoning folks has got, uh, restrictions. Now, I know that there's been obvious toward, uh, this. Some buildings are confined, um, to structurally bold. An additional floor or two. Um, some. Sometimes. It seems funny, but it's more costly. It'll make more money than one. For adding to work. But. So. So there are, it is possible, it is done. As you're updating. We're just looking for. The language that suits that you work with teams. The primary set is redevelopment ready sets. So this is where, this doesn't really happen until you're. Essentially, almost very. And the redevelopment services team basically starts to help the community. Essentially, when, what it is, it's. You want to get the. Sitting there, they're grabbing the main. Want to get them into private. Generate task. Uh, but you want to do that in the best. You want to. Set it up so that. If, if a developer comes in and they can see where the utilities. How close it is to the hospital, how close it is to this. How close it is to rail. Highways, all that stuff. What are my highways? Can I, how high? How much density? How many units, what's the minimum? Um, size of a unit. One micro. So that's what the redevelopment, uh, services team does, they. Help to, uh, talk about game and, uh, there's typically this line. Services, um. All kinds of things. And it's not just, uh, we come into like a. Whatever it is, it means, meaning, meaning. Certainly, that's, well, that's the. And essentially for promoting that site.
Very breasts. I can understand. Right. I cannot put myself in a grid and understand how to get to the goal. If we're trying to get to the highest level of graduation. Google will help us understand the power. We could see in real time. What steps we need to do to get to the finish line. Questions there are, either off or you know. Yeah, what to do. By bringing and moving. How much time do we need?
Foundation, yeah. In some cases. A little less than that, um, you've already got something going for you. This hearing, there's some community that. Have. A larger, a more, very long. Let me try to think, um. Really taken on the, one of the fundamental, important aspects.
You know, it sounds like we got people who are dedicated, it's sound like our number one. We're starting the ball, the role. For the commitments there. So if we focus with that committed team. You can exponentially get to where we wanted to do, what we wanted to do this part of graduation. I'm sorry.
So white green. Is going to be the essentials. Dark green is working out. That also fall by. So right now, you're fifty-two percent aligned with the essentials. So. So, um. And red means that the city is unaligned with the essentials or there's like best practice that there was significant work to do. Um, so each series align with fifty-two percent of essentials best practice. So.
So the red indicates what we need to do.
Yeah, and so this yellow. The yellow means that you're, you're essentially you got most of that, uh, self-criticism probably needs to be. And that's so bad. Uh, but needs work. Okay, so. Aligned with certified. Okay, so, notes here. One point two is the downtown for. So, I'm reading this word. It is unclear, it'd be two thousand eighteen. Those are were formerly adapted. While the plan is on the website, it is not accessible from any page of the website or in the DDA. Additionally, it is unclear in the picture of an active DDA. It is not acceptable from the DDA website. Well, this best practices, that this practice marked as certifying slash holy. There is more work to be done. In order to turn a vision into reality, we must experience transient accessibility around. Potential developers cannot know, they can't come up with information available. Also, where DDA has not adopted. But it's still important, the vision, the plan should be adopted, and the adoption, the permission should be. So it sounds like you've got a plan. Maybe a couple of the master steps here, does anything happen? Two, four.
So this is one point two. It was green.
Yes.
So you're saying the green part, sometimes you need a little bit of follow.
Well, in this case, this one does.
Okay.
I think for essentials, I don't think that she would. Necessarily, I think eventually it's something you can work on.
Okay.
You talked to Elizabeth. It's not the green, but it really helps.
But I do want you guys to know that I, the meeting is worked on Friday, um, and. Found that. Found that, or, um, the town center, we're likely. Here was also known as downtown violation man, that was adopted by council on November fifth, seventeen, voted made by Odin, second by Howard, there was.
Okay, cool. So if that information could be added to the plan online.
Okay.
Is what it is. And is it accessible by those properties? That are, that that plan is important to. Um, and from their website pages, that's the thing, that will be you. In the very clear. Um, best practice. Alright, that's what I'm getting. Yeah. If you would have put that in a trailer card and she would take a look and she'd give you commentary. Okay, uh, instant ordinance for parking possibility, also a lot of parking waivers with their. Parking, uh, within five hundred feet. A transit, about a six inch, uh, is. Position on, yeah, so. Um, so yeah, green on parking possibility, good little bit there. Um, three, um, and stormwater management, um, you know, uh, climate change. Flooding mitigation. You know, this, it talks about the, you know, importance of having bio spoils, I mean, infrastructure requirements. Um, by having developers include these in product sitting, see a reduction in stormwater. Good have, uh, that green infrastructure piece coming in as well. And approval authorities great to, um, have it be any commission to permitted uses. To do so without unnecessary. Essential. Um, that's one of the best practices that we. We want our communities to be able to adapt in place. And it's good to do that. Okay, aligned with essentials expectations. Um, let's see, the line with best plan, um, as a planning includes a zoning plan. Recommend instructions to the zoning ordinance, because recommendations that you have to be able to realize with updates in zoning work, so. Easter zoning ordinance, or zoning accessibility, user friendliness, um. Zoning ordinance, zoning map, easily accessible through the main, it's only. Age of website. Well, the ordinance uses tables in some areas, not. Um, she has a, there's no proof, for me to use table. Ordinance uses a water bottle, that may, we have to go look at an earlier section of the ordinance to see what was. It's hard to tell what the actual special uses are in town central. Easter zoning ordinance would benefit from comprehensive breathing and breathing, who would go out sitting, you could say with data. Then access to information includes, uh, the website includes all the information, one will be. That's good. She's got some notes in here, uh, with even some of the greens. Okay, so partially wrong. Natural plan. Um. Easter master plans from two thousand seventeen, that is due to review, um, earlier. Um, that leaves on a vision, Easter and finally reviews, it is the perfect time to make sure the city is on track to meet. Um, implementation, the implementation matrix, matrix and projects in Easter's master plan laid out a lot of work that he. Do not, but do not specify who, who's department's boards, but should be responsible for. Which leads to a lack of accountability, where everyone thinks someone else is responsible for. Um, for them, you are loading that permitted uses. Three C. We need a reason. Okay, so, um. We can permit uses of each district, mixed use buildings, but we might even mention. Me, her, see, best practices, and implement the city's vision. The ordinance should be updated to allow for mixed use buildings by break, and here is what's not straight into development. Uh, the issues building law refers to dreams and more people living in businesses, creating full wealth, not one.
I'm sorry, but mixed use residential business developments are mentioned, definitely. A mix, but we, the trial's great, but. We just started, I started in March, but I mean, we'll see the work that's been done on, to engage in fair every member of the community. The past, a couple of years, we've been having competition. Twenty notes from Adrian and Jordan, and he's been looking for that for this project, and this is relevant, that is. I believe. See, Easter allowed mixed use development, many by that, in our eventual cap, and then first on bottom, if it's being worn. You, you allow that to happen, that the automatic. Which can be helped in over the. But I don't know, never got the certain teaching that, that you can actually pass that, because it's going on very busy matter. So, um. So we need to admit, I'm believing, that past. You did? So, oh, okay. So that it was after the second, second reading, it said, reading the room.
You're almost there, you know, I'm actually about.
Okay.
Well, I know that we were on track, but we would say.
As you can, you would move my counter for shop, and when she's been, to, for the second meeting, and the city's going for it, and to be to, these years, especially. Around how where patient, any mission. The revolution number and most here.
Thank you.
Okay, hundred seventeen, twenty-four. Oh, twenty, twenty more. Time to go on right before. So it's not a radar. Yeah. Yeah. And that's what Elizabeth brought, it sounded insane, in order to. Achieve this part for the status, um, be. We want to allow development at five rate. Especially, as y'all know, are kind of. Yeah.
I think I have a question over here.
Somebody, that's the person I thought.
Yeah, yeah.
What it's not really good, that I process. But I'm hearing you speak, we're catching. Is, is it, I mean, question I have is. Do you have to be certified? Be, be, well, as you're looking, and you, if, if any one of your board members are sitting down at home, they're. And they're on. And that's, that's. And can they upgrade what the talk being called?
Yeah, they can. All of that, for trial award. Have that between you for storage. For like, where does she's found, where in the council wrote that this issue was brought? She can load that document right there for the entire, uh, tour. That, that, that no other has done right there, and from them all inspired them.
So does, is this going to be authority to make that now issue, or is it make the correction?
This is what happens. You take the minutes, whatever it is, that was the approval of that certain thing, and you drop that on that card electronically, or PDF, or members of board, or whatever it's in form of. She reviews it and she changes.
But it will return, she changed.
Yeah, I'll be, or, okay, she works with, since I have safety plus communities. So, depending on where that falls, for sixty plus communities, we're, uh, we could say. Right? But what's trouble also does, is that somebody, mission, or staff, or. Leadership, uh, puts something in there, it'll go. Okay, all these are.
I'm gonna read there.
So the thing that, think about it.
The thing is, is that he can never know, I could never know, all the things. The responsibility really goes to all on your. Right, to inform us and to show. I have. Well experienced community development directors in other communities, who will tell me all day long what they've done in the community. But I can't do a damn thing, sorry, I can't do anything about it. Until they actually spend that money. And I can get it over to somebody where I reveal myself. And then I say, yes, you're right. And I can check it out, right? Um, and that same thing with her. Um, in this presence. So. If you can gather the things and justify, hey, they, this is. Then, put a note in, hey, um, or relocated, then it can be changed, most certainly. Okay. Fortunately aligned with the essentials expectation, housing diversity. Those for townhomes as vibrant use. But does that allow for any other traditional missing middle housing? Alright. These regulations could be hampering the development of housing that could meet the needs of apartments to residents. Or attract new residents to Easter. With this practice, Easter will need to update the zoning ordinance to allow for additional types. Just as the housing needs of individuals change over a lifetime, unprecedented shifts in both demographics, lifestyles, fundamentally transform relationships. Adults living alone now comfortably thirty percent of American households. While only twenty percent of today's households are newly looking families. The housing market largely remains fixated on their. By twenty thirty, one in five people in the United States will be over age sixty-five. Um, and by twenty thirty-five, older adults are compared to older children at first time. Nation's housing stock doesn't fit reality. As you begin. On your journey to revamp Easter's zoning ordinance, the AARP's publication making room. Housing for changing America, a good place to start. Spilled with different graphics, ideas, and solutions for our modern, modern, modern needs. There is an amazing model, well, AARP.
That's crazy, they're so.
Okay, so.
But it's perfect.
We're just gonna repeat it, we got, I found that there is a little thing about. Twenty, you said in twenty thirty. So, I can include it for, uh, the numbers. The baby, the baby goes to house, that was, uh. The amount of children.
Yeah, for him.
Who did this baby?
Was it mom?
You would depend.
Um, I think that's part of the AARP. But again, I think you're gonna have to probably go back a little.
Okay.
He uses their. Another thing too, that's, um, I mean, so you need a lot of, I have a policy. Use a lot of meeting from hours before, that you can tell you guys, uh, the chats that we have there, which is from employee. Persons, and mission, particularly. There's like forty-two percent of possible, of like one. Um, which is just. Not a subject. And I think housing has a big part to play, just under the board. Um, so housing options are really important. Okay, on the line.
Oh, good, great question. So I should find. That's true. But this, it's only worth, so. Housing. But that would be. Need me, well, to be pretty. Cause that's a, that's a long market, international. Is there anything that's all worth? Your knowledge. I can find you.
There's nothing. Define whether or not, uh, that, that, why you take off, but you go and go. Bring in, and you had made that, um, we printed, and started to do that, and it, that's enough to. If it was in overlay, uh, what we wanted that neighborhood character to look like, you can enter in the area, it all depends on where the location. But as you was hearing all, um, yes.
I heard that you have a charging on.
We saw it in Seattle, and, and the city of Minneapolis, and seeing, um, going down, see, okay. I was only for one purpose, I was only, it's really not a special, all I did.
I was likely to be in conversations like that.
I'm sorry.
Reality out, okay. That means a lot of sense, because, because we take, or, the, there's a movement, uh, next, M E C, which I don't know, corporation, put out that tactic and how we can zone. City, in one best practice, one tool that they offer, they have to consolidate their zoning business. We're now, so you use about five. Right? So we only really need, need two, three, uh, to simplify. So. Because we, we might not offer, or. Um, have a single, very, it's great, doesn't mean that we don't offer, oh. Doesn't mean that we're taking away, right, capital. This means that we're providing for the mixed household size, mixed household income of the missing middle house technology that are, that are.
So with the thirty percent of single adults, maybe they were someone. I'm considering that all else. That's expensive. So I could run, run house usually, and this thing, I mean, is there that?
Yeah, it's, like, these are great feedback, these are great, um, great questions. So an example, um, so, okay, right now, there's a. A dichotomy between how, you either, single family tax homes, that we all know, that are, like, then, that makes a lot. And then there's, uh, multiplex apartment building. That probably, see, that probably, I think, right now, we, I would. So, in between, we're finding out that missing middle, and that too, with different types of sizes, like, I know, that is possible. And the ARP has great, uh, you know, might have been dialogue, but there's. Article on I that shows all the different housing technologies that are clean, there's also duplex. Okay, there's, yeah, it's, there's duplex, there's townhomes, there's triplexes.
It's minimal, two of, um, something that, uh, maybe, maybe.
Yeah, so the plane USA report shows a third market demand for.
Say, we can get paid for. Really, what, probably a lot of them, I just said very strongly, I have another thing I would be guys, please take a look at small community that's based already in, like, you know, boom. They're using solar cells to generate their own electricity. They're using everything they can to bring under pressure. Uh, the community and being self-reliant away from the grid. And in their little small houses, investing.
Yes.
So it, when it, currently asking you to raise your hand in person. Okay, very.
I think.
Naturally.
So you want to have these small daydreams for.
One, this is. On that too.
He might say, we won't, we won't.
Okay, so capital improvement, having a C I P make it easier to request additional funding. Often in the form of grants or low interest loans, many granting organizations from the federal government. Are under natural resources, the HEMEDC. Require a C I P when applicant is submitting to prevent funding. Want to see that your community is organized and the plan for shovel ready projects, and those projects have the support of elected and appointed officials. Capital improvement and the list of capital projects over a six year period. How you look upon those projects when they're going to be killed. Speed up for us. You're talking about fire truck, uh, acquisition or large community project, those sorts of things, having to involve, uh. That.
Absolutely, most of them.
So how would we? But I think maybe, um, maybe you, yeah, it falls under people with four hands, I think it's six year. It used to be five years, but then we're about a tire. Right? Or especially. Should, yeah.
So I just must know it. What's the step part? Like the objection.
Uh, let's take it a minute. And how did that be with?
We need to have a meeting to understand what the six year.
So.
Yeah, there's a number of things that. Right now. Do you kind of gather all that information, display it at high levels, like fifty snippets?
That's right.
And you look. You're wondering, how far out, you're not going to go all those points on the, all the parts. So you're looking at a year or two, you're going to be doing a string for one. That has certain details of. Of the city, uh, year four, it is required seconds, uh, emergency vehicle. Yeah, it's stuff like that. So, yeah, so you didn't, you didn't write it better. Um, okay, so four point one is the review. Exor does not have applications for boards or commissions readily available on the website. Being clear and accessible, improving appointment, uh, procedures reduces barriers to attracting quality candidates for its commissions.
That should be realized.
And yet. Okay, and then the note actually says here, on the easiest way to create transparency and including board members. Include a word in commission application on the website, permission about how to join. Yeah, but it's just.
Required.
Required, yeah. Okay. Uh, orientation package, so there's the orientation. Each, uh, remember, boards and commission members often volunteers. Do not need to be subject matter experts to make valuable contributions to the. However, they should be provided with all the tools they need to be effective in their roles. With evolving related boards and commissions, this can include the master plan, zoning ordinance bylaws. Handbook of expectations, information on Robert's rule order. Basic information on training, meeting schedules, board staff, content information. And Michigan municipality cameras. But it also includes recent meeting minutes, orientation package should be paired with in-person orientation.
Okay.
Okay. That's why I'm here. That's why I care, right? Kind of gives the juices flowing. But then you can bring it together and submit.
Thanks.
Uh, the. Training strategy, training is vital to success in many communities. Developing a training strategy provides opportunities and encourages ongoing training aligned with these goals and needs. Uh, as you can see in the pictures on the slide, we're not the only ones highlighting the goals. Training. Training and continuing education is the best strategy, planning and zoning risk management. Create a training strategy, words should be asked, what topics they want to learn. Topics should be aligned with board interest, goals, plans. And challenges communities trying to resolve. Training strategy should identify work patients, should identify and establish funding sources, although the best things in life. In training strategies can be created. Good training does not have to be cost-effective. Strategy should also help with training to be consistently encouraged. This can be, uh, can be scheduled. Meeting trainings and resources of board and mission members should report out on mission theme and external trainings. And how the community intends to renew and up in the strategy. Uh, should be updated at least, uh, every other. Uh, and, and you can get, um, uh. We will push out. Uh, notifications to Mars in communities about trainings that are available. Uh, either, and they come now, shapes, sizes, forms, costs, rate. So.
And that's for. For, right?
Yeah. Yeah, but if anybody who's in the process. I think, but this is definitely pointing for. Uh, communities, but. Yeah, it's for more, it's under the best practice.
We're ready now, the meeting happened.
Uh, that's the next one. Join, yeah, so, yeah, you get to see the joint meeting.
We're ready now.
The joint meetings and trainings are endless and are limited only by your imagination and willingness to be with each other. Exor is completing his first annual joint meeting today. This. Change for Brad. The room.
So. We need to fix training strategy, you can also read the orientation package, I just want to put out there that we don't have to train them, we don't at all. That's when the umbrella is off, because there are RC planners, shows us examples of best practice of how to use these tools before, but we can just tell.
Yeah, so. Now that we had it.
Yeah, probably.
Which is probable, I mean, I don't.
Okay, we can all come down upon our, just be here.
We, we, we don't have many times, but as, as our, as the spirit committee grow, we'll, we'll have to comment. What was, what was the question? Do we have times, meeting times already for the spirit? Yes, we do. And, and not. The community, uh, people.
Sure.
So we can be like every. Uh, my ladies, we can be. Did you say yes?
So.
He said, yeah.
They probably have seen it.
Yeah, he said, he said, yeah. Okay, so the only, I don't know.
He, he, he'll say yes.
He's coming.
So, okay, just one quick note, since we changed from running green on this one percentage, we're based on the certified.
They should.
Yeah, I hope. The city should continue this practice each year and should include. With all the related. Okay, so. The process and next steps. Right now, the slideshow, this. Uh, our, the Exor is already received baseline for, and is on step four, properly missing R C best practices. And so. Pretty much. Now, step four is a, it's a big step. To get, um, but. Work on it, it's, it's gonna happen. Benefits of implementing redevelopment. So now that you're familiar with our C, you're likely wondering why would. What's the benefit? Aside from the intangible value that just went with the third party review of springs. The R C teams were part of the goal and any other benefits. Technical listens. Our C provides mesh funding to this community implementing their vision, involving fans to create and reaching the essential. Nation. Common practice or projects include master plans, local pace, marketing strategies. Certified level communities continue to conduct access to this report for the main experience. The R C team also provides tailored hands-on technical support to help you achieve the same best practice criteria. Recent examples have included element training strategies, load chart, and business regarding strategy. This support attributes that are seen in ongoing partnership. Our team doesn't write or report and say, well, look. You're here to help you implement your community. On certification, communities, the expertise, the available services teams, support priorities, and the visioning and marketing to develop. Now, let's do a, oh, uh, so, I'm just glad you opened and writing a piece where we call it in front of the places. Frequent announcement updates followed the media channels. I'm achieving the M E D C newsletters. I think that I have and we will have. In our six, your email. There's a link to let you get to know the plan for newsletters. I refer to any of the kind of banking mail, forwarded, buried in lots. Even if it doesn't make sense to them, the conversation is about my private information, my newsletter. Uh, friends, my name is Donovan Romano.
I can make it. They, they were taking me to the dialogue, it's been a great time last week.
So our, um, our class item, um, for this thing is, um, there's an opportunity for us to hear who's in the room. Uh, with word commission if you represent, which you don't have to represent through my gosh, but we, we totally come to learn. Uh, but we just want to ask some refreshing questions, uh, so we'll maybe give you a few minutes to kind of listen to precise questions before. We ask those who voluntarily want to share a little bit about what, um, the answer to questions are, you know? Uh, so, for example, you might introduce yourself. Uh, name any or all boards or communities that you represent. And then you might choose to enter any of the additional questions that might ask. Your board mission participability, development goals, or. You might ask to share how you feel like your board missions, um, should support the process of adapting from new methods. Uh, what do you want to do for zoning ordinance? Uh, you might answer the question about what kind of trainings do the board committees need to be most effective in their development. Uh, or you might answer the question, um, or you could also tell us if anyone.
I have this one thing I'd like to say. Well, I'm counting to go with this. Okay, one of the things I like about our mission and the council, their joint meetings. I think that was a certain real, real plus is the city, the principal, you know, they need to do, we should know what we're all trying. That's one thing I found, I think. That's all I have to say. And I'm also convinced the city of, Minister of Fire Department, and I am out of that. Disabled Tennessee Fire Department, no longer do that. So, I chose without of the push of the air. Mayor, you know, the commission of the basic fire commission, so I'm there now. And I'm excited because I knew, uh, we knew mom and dad is good, was awfully good, and my dad's very modern, very vital, and he's been properly chosen. And have a piece of this in communication. I love this having to be here, the boss, this can only love the effort, passion, as a city, when we sit and we communicate together. We understand what's going on, we understand where we are going. We'll be dispersed going around in the area, we can actually speak for the authority, all the fun. A lot of questions, it seems crazy, but it'll all be able to say further where we go. I'm going to say, um, how long? Let's see, in whatever way that we can sort of defend it, we can apologize if it's not... To the Chair of the Commission, one of the things that I should share in life, I text, we're closing, and I would tell this if you asked about it. That was the part of this housing project, because any round from year one, we thought of our work, so if you're on avenue of, you will see, not a bad word, one of the smaller houses, and the millions back in town, and home, five, six, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Southern tops, well, they recently bought that block land, anything that cleared, it's more mansion. And it's right across, and it would see they did have multiple houses right in the area, where they cleared the land and poured out small house, going to start over, two over mansion, and... You know, both of those, that's in, how many acres, we would have to do like that, not to the south of the town, and south of that, that's how we talked, talking in these places. It's right there, that's what they're doing, and, um... Anyway, that shit, life, is not a figure of sentence, we're not doing more with this stuff than right now. So, I was happy to see that, that it was one of those wonderful questions. There, the conversation started, we had been, you know, so much always going on, and then, and then I will know, you know, whatever. So, I'm glad that, um, because that, by the way, the patient, not just me, her, the law, or how we see the old law, the problem like that. Black end, dispersed by all four houses around them, to the people that they want to block. So, a lot of people saying, I don't think people have moved it like that, I can leave those, those things, and you move, that's the type of ending of something, that's why people agree, no very thing in my lady, they just put a big boat to the table. I haven't actually... You guys, you take this up, and I feel, well, you want anybody to go, regardless, this is a different city, I'm going down the street.
For example, a city has this higher range, they have the quality, right, mansions, and then smaller homes, it's very nice. They offer, in one block, you can see the different sizes of the personal that they allow, they're that... They comfortable and grand.
What, and what's... Well, I see, no, that was very, very, so, you know, you have to go to where I have, two million, oh, two, that's it. Your warrant, your high, it's, it's unbelievable, the little fat in Europe, a while, and have to chat. But, no, I'm saying, I mean, literally, they need to come off them right, give them serious, right, and I'm literally, I mean, it's literally across the street. Literally across the street.
What's funny is me, turn on maybe three walls, leave one wall up, and just fill up all of them, and if you come, I wonder, oh, that, but it's a bigger house. And like, I'm on the, my, you know, we continue to work on, involved in the library, so the first century of educational and cultural development. One thing we did talk about is cultural development, actually about cultural arts, neurodevelopment, things like we showed earlier, similar plans, it's going to happen with the area. Completely cultural arts is relevant to revitalizing the community, I think, most of the period. I think when that part, and actually the seeds of culture currents have already been planted. You have two murals up, you have East of Sun Affair, you have a library as an institution, you have an extra African ingredient market, which is specialty market, where they sell things that you're not a private, poor, rural, or anything. But the seeds are already germinating right in the city of Meister within our town center district. Now, is the time for us to really take that to another level, with neurodevelopment, expanding that neurodevelopment, and also bringing in new types of fact, when we talk about family pass, bringing new types of tools to, to, you know, just really creating a cultural experience so that people can come there to cook the destination, and say, wait a minute, I want to invest in that girl, and I want to open up this restaurant, I want to do, you know, I want to do work lift spaces within the city of Meister. And I know we focus a lot on TC, but let's not forget about the south side of the city of Meister, now Harrison.
All right.
But we said, you know, right, and we're, so we're, we now, we have an obligation to not just build up our TC, but build up our neighborhoods, and residential neighborhoods, and put businesses in those neighborhoods as well. And so, I'm happy to be here tonight, myself, I think, here, Mary, we talk about this, myself, a lot, about what we need to bring forth synergy into the city of Meister, not just domestically, but internationally, making Meister an international destiny of essence. And so, we have a lot of work to do, but I think with a group like this, we'll get to the top of the mountain. Love them.
Okay. No, I mean, to try to remind you, so that we can, that my living school, I want... Anyway, so, honey, you can stand, and let's go. And, um, but, um, I would like to see what I would, to put on right now. And I think that what I hear is excellent move, and it's, you know, we got a little bit of every time, that county, that family, that residential, you know, that housing. I think that this is like an excellent body to be right here, right now, before it starts to retire. And I'm a person of belief, and I think that all we need is two people to do our work. And one of the things that I would like for the team, with the family, is for the family and the city council to be on one floor, because what aggravates me most of the time, is we have the family committees have gone through everything that needs to go through, then it gets to the council, and it gets that down, and they really don't really understand what we've gone through to make that happen. So, I think that if everybody, those go through boards really came together really more often, that's what I would like to see from coming from the family and the city council together. And I think that will just move everything along from there. The more important is who is here, and I, you know.
But, you know, if you're, I do, you do want to check off to do that. There's no getting reasons why, why, outside of...
Yes. Absolutely.
And, you know, some reason, was, but then, what, but that was one of the things I tried, that did, none of them all, but then one of them doesn't understand, because I'm not going to do, what you didn't see.
Oh, okay.
And she says like that, second, we took, fired like, this is one of the issues that we have there on the news, we can talk about, size of the meeting, are you willing to handle it, or even more breathing, you know? And then the baby, I guess that she was sitting there, so it was getting snowed off, and it was out, and you see it here. So, when you get to forty, it's, it's a very, I think, a lot of, and it's only a nine of us on the floor, seven of us in council, they're trying to explain, the neighborhood here, it was only, the whole, the entire voting, and this is who struggled up. So, it's still, it's a minute, but it's like, don't chat out, because we can get moved forward, and you said, we didn't want to do two, we need to do five, I don't want to do anything, share, but I guess, and, and we all just, and however, we're not going to express a little bit of, we're not that, or...
And I'm going to agree, we get ready, we're talking about, we say, I want to be watching, once you get in front of her, but when you all be thinking about you, we trust that you look at, and you're making the right decision. So, I would, my thing is, I would, my vote, and very that, when the council looks at, they trust the family, that we looked at. That's why we, you know, we got concerned with the place, and the council, and the family, and the state. unanimously, that if you go forward, we, the council could not be, I don't know how to say it, should not, but...
That, that, that was going to be great, I've been at our station before, where L D D A, the, 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 and publicly said, we're gentle, how are you all over? And they're like, oh, and it was about how this happens, and I'm sure, so, it'd be like, up or down, right, go for it, and start another one, I think, and then, like, we should move forward. So...
Well, we have more training than we do, that will be cross, like, across the city, and work, and then, and sponsoring, and bringing, that will really will help to keep them on a stage, and so. That's what involves, this, this, well, both, preparation on how the business is, are all those, so, and all of this, and all of this work, and everyone to do, continue with a rate, and, you know, I do a lot of, certainly, I have other skills, maybe it's not a lot, or if you're learning, you know, the role, helps the order.
What, what is, I guess, right here, right here, so, and if this gets to board, this, this, anyway, just, or, they're not just anybody.
So, I'm going to start with, I'm, I'm also, and, um, this, children brought up, very good point, and, you know, I'm a neighborhood kid, so I'm going to be one hundred percent. Bottom line is, if you're not asking, that, that is, that is what has to be for this community. We, we don't come to the table, or we don't make a decision, we have other things to sit and pour, but if we come to the table, just like, he says he's not part of the convention, or he just as, as a public, but the public, we are the public, we are the public, we are the rest. We have to come to the table, we have to continue to move forward. Now, if you guys paid attention, there was five that were, five or six that were RRC certified, there were maybe another sixty-four that were, as a second, 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 but the vast majority of these students instead of Indians are not. So, we have to pay attention to what's going to benefit our community. And we have sat, and we have sounded, forty years ago, the community has sounded, they're behind all of my life, and have not pushed our community forward. We cannot continue to sit still and not come to the table and make progress, we have to make progress, we have to make progress. So, for all of you guys who took time out of your busy schedule, to come and participate, and this joint training, we thank you, we appreciate you, brothers, and citizens, thank you, and appreciate, and please, do not be a stranger. We have to make a difference, we have to come, we have to put our stance, like I said, if you don't come to the table, you can't make any decisions. Let's stop being at the door, let's come to the table.
Yeah. You don't have to wait for me.
I have twenty-two, I am, I'm, I'm a, me, the resident, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a resident, I did, um, no, his, um, okay, we mentioned, we have to be, something that we, still active, but they can show what's going on in the community. I have been on the D V A, I don't, I don't know what's going on with that, because I should be giving you information for that. But I want, I'm here today, and I would like to see, from the day, some generation that we've been, um, speaking about, I mean, for so many years, I did, um, fit in on RRC train, and stuff, and that, along with, because they got, um, a lot of stuff, you know, that, um, you obviously put in function. So, again, I'm glad, and I was, much to be, you know, you sit in and hear, you live in, with the, um, and you all go to, and we, Donovan, and we've been inspired, so, um, I'm glad I can... Only one thing, I don't know, I say too much, we go far, we think, you know, my neighbor's going to go down, I think, or to the East of Chamber, my man put it on, on board, too. Um, I'm sure that all of them have inspired, I will probably check on that, so, when, and we, I would like to...
If I can say this, I'd love being in meetings where, before, must be, we really miss that, brother, friend, here. We go all the same without stress.
He will think of... All right, this is... I just think we have pretty much all of the, here, um... Maybe, um...
This, most of it, yeah. I'm eighty, this is our two, five, nine, the little, five, we meet, um, and perhaps we can, but we can make changes, um... That, that, we see now, but, in anything, we are, we have to have the first, with some common, many, for exercise, so, I, I want people to have, and, and, maybe that, we, we want, and what we're, well, whatever we have to do to create that, uh, unity among our group. We, we want, we want to participate, um, well, whatever we have to do to create that, uh, uh, unity among our group.
So, um, obviously, I've been, I've been patient, but. Um, so the primary problem we have, one, um, one issue, those, those are going to be completely impossible this time. Um, so we probably got, probably said, well, we, we request coming up, so that, for answer, um, we need to get together, so, because we already have, uh, we've already got the, 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 uh, we've got some things going. Said, what would we know about this, uh, one of the things that we plan on, you know. It's going a lot of community, um, because people are already managing, what's going on, concerned about this, so we are in, in our, other than we, we're supposed to, that's, and, only, the, the, every time. Um, so, that's one thing. As far as these, I love those guys, and, uh, one of the things that we, uh, sadly, long, about, I, I, second staff. Um, we really get the choice, maybe, but, but we put in an application for that, um, here, uh, so, that's, I mean, whatever. So, this thing here, from, um, this, I'm depending on, the, 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 I saw it now, so, I was bad, so.
Okay, you're starting with, yeah, you're starting with, you're starting with, you're starting with, uh, uh, already, there's, uh, uh, there's. There you go.
Um, with regards, in, in our current path, we want to, maybe, uh, say, um, be one of those, um. Uh, they, what, what point of things that we want to be part of, kind of, see. But, uh, let's say some things, that's, South by, you see, with all of the. That right there, is going to be, you know, this, 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 hard, that is going back to him. So, that, that has, I choose. I'm pretty sure we don't have a, whole, whole, um, yeah, and, yeah. So, not whatever, that would be all, you know. So, so, like, like, you know, there was, talking about parents, South by, a massive, um, I'm really looking forward to. Um, I'm really looking forward to, um, I would maybe look at the form of crying, you know, I think, I think I'm always a child. So, I thought, and we talked about, we, 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 we're serious and such, especially, we, 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 we're not really. This is, we don't need each other, we want to, to, we want to rebuild it, to run, do rehab, and then we're. All the doors, yeah, those can run.
Well, that's a big revelation, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, so all the, so we're going to leave, um, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to, we're not going to, we're going to, and plan, post, and, um. That, we, 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 the entire construction and training. Who that we brought in, who just have parents here, that we know, they don't, for that, I, it's going to be, that all that, we're ready to start. It's not going to be, before, before you think, three ninety days, hundreds of days before, they don't need to try to, they just, basically, let's have them, they have to come out. But all, we, we had eighteen months, we can start a little bit, trying to demo, if y'all got, we're ready to go, we're our internal company, we've got some money. More we will yield them for our people, the job that we know, they will do, they will, they will, they will stay on service. Out. So. Well. This is, um, I had a question about Ronfield, what's going on with Ronfield? But there, there is opportunity in that.
Uh, that, that, I, I was careful around Phil for many, uh, years, I, I, I don't even know that, I have proud for him, he met me.
Have that right with this stuff, the Ronfield.
Proud for him, that he's here, Doc. Yeah.
Sorry, I understand, you saw.
Even if you don't have an action, Brownfield, we felt forty. Your room taking decisions right now, that's fine, lots of teams down, people are more comfortable again, but we can all make some. Brownfield, we want, we, oh, one, uh, so, yeah, and people create that.
I'm saying, I'm letting the last, um, quite, uh, training, but, um, for my people. Such a material.
Yes. Okay.
Oh, I was going to say, I haven't heard Ronfield, it's a human Ronfield that everybody is finding. Reverse of the national view, you bring the example, uh, to hurt. And it's a bit more important for the father. I don't know what product is, but it's something that's, well, one. I appreciate, oh, yeah, yeah, so. Um, and last one, it was, um, the hundred, I was, I do. But I, we, we, we are, we are also, we're. Things they, you know, true, those, you know, things that, that's true. Said, you know, when I, sometimes I would, um, for, for, uh, we, we were, we were. That's off, it's hitting you, right, and sitting right now, what. So here, but some of this, that's, um, what I'm raising. I think here, um, there, I'm coming to the first, I can't, it's down, um, so I, I would like to start seeing it. Um, and it does kind of affect me, but I understand other students, people that's, uh, not, rather, I don't know. We keep that up for, 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 as well, for. But we have to be able to, you know, we have so much. We say, for, yes. But it's, yeah, we, how would we like, you know.
Oh, very nice, thank you.
Yeah, one person who did, you're, you're very, you're, you're interested in this, 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 um. Here. Uh, my name is. Here, the last, maybe. Um, actually, it's my meaningful, my mind, I like, uh, the people I see. That now, and then, and started looking at coaches, and thought about, you know, what type of potential, like, these things, um. Um, and I'm, I'm working with that, and so travel to them, and she was a senior, uh, right, we, I. Uh, then here, I heard, um, I found Daniel from, uh, ten, five, and, and, uh, I just knew. I'm saying, I'm seeing, I, I feel, really so much, because, yeah, so much, things you know, it's like, stop. And I think the challenge in that, um, money, all of the, 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 the others, yes. We have, we're going to need, you know, to, 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 to make it, but it's, you know, I really, we have to be the ones to be able, we want, we are, so. And that's why I'm here, and I remain here, and, um, I just. I'm just, I, I just, I want much more for us, I go to the third part. Uh, I know all the soul, you know, to your choice, with, with, you know, uh, choice, we go to all the teams, like, Virgil, and Roylo, and. And, 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 there, it's, I think, I, I, it's, all of it. There's not one single, we, we, we want, obviously, we, we, all of them, we. So, not only the, you know, I talk about, it's always, my, it's, it's, the whole community is not going to see it's. Um, absolutely, it's going to be a weird small percentage that will, so it's, we're not, we're not, we see it. I'm going through work and to, 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 with the problem, or go by, or, or.
And what, what, gather to get, what, have the tape. Have the tape.
Those. Okay, that, that, that. So, when we are talking about issue, folks in, to folks in, uh. Seeing, trying, two hundred, because, again, this is a thing to mention, that's it. So, we have a lot of work, but she been, just, not. So, I just wanted to say. We're, we're just. Well, very skilled, we, 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 we're full of new tools. Yeah, we're talking about folks who are brilliant. So, we have to. Sell. Tell our story, uh, it's. Not the media, the story, uh, from a two story, also, and folks who are comfortable, living there, raising their children, and just. All right then, everybody, let me just say, first of all, wow. This is truly awesome. But these things I heard tonight, for me, for her being proactive, and being successful. And I, and I, it currently found a legitimate. That we can assume that somebody's doing the work. But we don't do work, we can't prove it. And we sit around the table and look at each other, and we remember tonight, like, okay, what's the next? You know, I heard, remember to tell you, you know, part of the media, how we, that, well, let me say it to you, but. Anyway, but that's, I, I, that's, that's, so, make sure we didn't get any, I mean, I mean, definitely, talk, and just start a formula like that, because. It's one of those pieces of our R R C, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, 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 we have to hold, so. We can't meet too. That's the biggest thing for me, like, oh, you'll be, to be, oh, what'll be for you? You know, and, awful God, Martin, you know, Martin, David. We started here, needs, and it's, we, two hundred, we have three. I remember, uh, nine seventy, we had that as well, for the city hospital, David, and so, David, David, twice. I'm going to see my, down, there. So we had, and our reaction is, is, because, right, everybody else is telling us, except us. So, and I'm really close to know, uh, you know, this, we, 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 we have. Like, we gotta take care of what we have, nobody know what we have, who's going to come? When you don't tell our own story, and sort of, sort of, or, or, something, but, and other people are just contagious. They don't believe us, because they don't, they don't work, once you live here, work here, it's like, wow, it's great. And you've been, and it, and it, and it's about the two, and we know that other people are acting, but we. It's, it's what it is, because, yes, it's cold. Because every day around this is so high, and you talk about property, like, oh, my, oh, here, they're focusing on that, well, what's stopping? It's the mirror, so it's funny, yeah, people have a right to buy and bar, and buy property. We know what happened in the Great Fire, the nights and days, for most black businesses, uh, cities, and, and west, and so are their properties, and businesses, to, to their community. And as a result, what's happening now, so it's, in order for us to be efficient, we have to not only meet, reach potential, but we have to. Get those resources together, in order to, and, you know, you know, it's, you know, you know, you know, you know. You know, on that, I'm, I'm, so when I look at my son now, seventeen, he's graduating from high school, kicking him out of the house, getting to go to work. He can look back and see the work that we've done for years, and I say, wow, I'm going to be, I'll come back. And, and everything that I'm doing, I want to travel, for the rest of, um, I, that's the wrong idea, that's the real. So, anyway, I know we talk a lot, but takeaway to. Where are we going to be? What's the next step? I'm pretty sure, kind of, they, this phase, and I'm all motivated, I just don't know that, it's like, I'm, it's like, Steve, you can, it's like, it's like. I love it, and, uh, it's one of, we, we, I'm going to say, it's, I'm, you know, everything. Hey, right here, that's, we don't get, that, of other communities, that's what we got, a lot of people want to do, think about that, well, people everywhere else, because everybody else, because it works. But we don't have enough, we have a lot of people now, so, while, let's all each other, conflict. That's how I'm going to be, I'm going to be, just going to hear, you know, of all, what we can, so now, I'm holding, that's a problem, you know, you're a problem. I'm holding, that's my, so, twenty steps, that's what I want. Both next, so.
Our ad hoc, maybe, we can move back together, um, and gather all of the folks that have been about, so. Gather together, scheduling is, um, so please bear with us, as we figure out what, um, makes sense, but I would say our ad hoc community is one of the best. Uh, some of the other things that are at our community, um, that's not about, we have to do, the re-person, and I'm worried, concerning, uh, for the provisions. Uh, so that, you know, for the, that is likely one of the most, um, set of activities. We have this long training package in September, it doesn't go, so, and we need all of you. Yeah.
Or, this one, the, uh, next, uh, go, yeah.
Um, so, hopefully, we can all, each other again, to join training, but bring more people, bring other folks that are, are part of. Um, hopefully, all of the council can be there, and all of the, there, um, one, other, um, and, uh, I don't know. So, um, bigger project, I mean, there's a mass plan, yes, and going forward, be right. And I would say, we have a competition with our R R C banner, you know, funding available for us to need, and, and, that, 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 wow, we, 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 we. We go out, our best.
But we know the matter, right?
Yeah.
Right, 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 it's completely, so, we, we, some of the time, we, we, five years, so, speaking of it, and looking at the matter. Our life, and it's definitely, our, and, 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 right, I'm, I'm sorry, guys, we just need to. Update, this is your, 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 right?
Well, I would say that, the next couple of things, we, 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 would be, uh, a refresher on the magic ten minutes.
Yeah.
Would be to go into, you know, an hour, and, uh, that could change, uh, in the day. So, if you're having any decision of what we want to do from there, we can, we can see any goals that we build, or like, moderate thing, or we can decide, we can, like, we're good, science, another part here. Uh, for the, and I also say, voting word in one day, I, I mean, it's the Easter, uh, I hear everyone in the room. Everyone's working Easter, everyone's Easter, full line, I heard that, that, so we need to make sure that our voting word is, first. Matter, first, uh. For, introduction, the, 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 right now, I think, it's not, it's, 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 it's so not, not, not. So I would say that, that, that's for our community board, um, and I think, I think, I'm engaged in going for it, right, right now, and. And we're, we can save it for Easter, um, if we get funding for that, I'm hoping.
We need to start, maybe, for that.
Yeah, we would have a series, maybe, with the voting word in one day, we're thinking, going through, these great, that, that, stuff, too.
I think, I think, I hope, I wish I, yeah, right, it's, it's kind of hard, because, it's, 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 you're saying to me, that the matter was planned. Did it make, it's already been updated?
No.
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 It needs to be updated, so, I, I agree, so. One of the people that I have, I'm like, very forward, you know, and people disagree, you know, I don't understand, because we, I don't know why they do programs, and they, they. I was stupid as I, or, and then they put on their building, and, you know, that would, it would, it would. It's, yeah, so, that's why I asked, what, can you, can I, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Right, so, so, so what is, what is being said, we, we, every five years, that's going to be, be updated, six weeks, right now, we are, and I feel. So we feel that it needs to be updated, because we love it, so now, who are you?